I will now call the June 18, 2012 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you will stand, observe a moment of silence, and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I'd like to welcome those of you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV 7, to tonight's Blue Springs City Council meeting. The next item is a consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? Seeing none, I accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Councilman Cabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edinson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Next, we have a discussion on the CDBG 2012-2013 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of the council. Again before you this evening is our last review before we publish the draft of the annual action plan. Plan to be published this Saturday. Be open for a 30-day period for any public comment, and after that time, we'll come back for final approval of that. The annual action plan itself is essentially just a cookie-cutter template that we utilize, and the meat of it is before you this evening in the form of the six identified specific projects with the dollar amounts, and just want to present those to you from the last council discussion. Make sure that staff has that accurate and correct, and that we can go forward with, again, just the draft at this point. It is a formal resolution following this discussion to actually publish that draft, and, again, leave it open for 30 days for public comment. I'll stand for any questions or comments.
Any questions, council?
Yes.
Councilman Fowler?
Yeah, the line items there, there's six of them on here. I look, and I can see downtown live 5,000, historic 100,000, historic building restoration $100,000, historic district improvement, sidewalk, street lighting, et cetera, in downtown area, another $33,000. But that proportion of that balance between residential homeowners and business, looks like about two to one dollars go into business versus homeowners. And HUD actually starts with housing, and there's just not as, you know, I'm not seeing that balance to go into low-income family and supporting their needs. So, anyway, that's what I've been looking for in this program, started from the beginning. Still not seeing it, so I want to put that out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution granting approval to publish the draft of the 2012-2013 CDBG Annual Action Plan. Is there a motion?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All we need is just a motion, I believe.
Just a motion. I'll make a motion then.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries. Next, we have a public hearing on rezoning. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce exhibits for public hearing, RZ 5123436. This includes city council information form with attachments. Make sure I'm on the right one. City council information form with attachments, site location map, staff report with attachments, affidavit of publication in Examiner on May 26, 2012, application with attachments, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letters sent to said property owners, and these are all the exhibits we have to offer on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
All right, before you this evening, Your Honor and councilmen, is the request from the property owner of 1201 Northwest Knox. It's shown there in the site map above at the northwest corner of Knox and 12th. A little bit difficult maybe to pick out the square-shaped roof of the property on the aerial image below. But the property owner is requesting to rezone from the T3 district, which is suburban district in the downtown zoning district, to T5, which is general urban. This was presented to the planning commission last week at their meeting. The property itself is just under a quarter of an acre in size. Again, it is an existing commercial building. It's been vacant for a while. There's a small parking lot adjacent to it, and, again, the requesting, requested zoning in and of itself is more in character with the type of buildings and uses, as you can see there even on the image across both Knox and 12th Streets. You can see by the dark line above kind of how the downtown zoning district kind of wraps around this corner. This may be a better picture of that. What had happened back in 2007 when the downtown development code was first adopted, looked at the existing industrial, kind of light industrial area in downtown along the railroad, and actually essentially carved that part out of the downtown zoning district, and looked at the areas and uses surrounding that instead. This is one of those pieces that got pulled into that downtown zoning district. You can see a lot of the other T3, T5 designations around this area. And this was pulled in with that entire block as a residential zone. However, this is the only property that does have an existing commercial building on it. Again, with the downtown zoning district being informed-based in nature, it looks more at buildings rather than uses. Again, considering this is a building that is entirely available for commercial, not at all able to be used as residential. Staff was in agreement with the requested proposal to rezone it from the T3 to the T5 in order to allow commercial use or reuse of the existing commercial building. So with that, again, it was presented to the planning commission last week. Planning commission unanimously recommends approval before you this evening.
Are there questions of Ms. Allen?
I just wanted to point out the downtown review board also looked at this and approved it as well.
Yes, thank you for the correction. Thank you for the clarification. The councilman loves to say the downtown review board did review it last week, as you noted, and also recommend, recommended unanimously approval of this request. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Ms. Bushyhead are here on behalf of the applicant.
Good evening. My name is Christine Bushyhead, 12. I do. Christine Bushyhead, 1220 Washington, Kansas City, Missouri. Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Huff Enterprises, the applicant in this instance. We don't really have anything more to add. Wanted you to know that we do have already a tenant in that location, under a temporary use permit. She has been in operation there for almost a month now. Doesn't seem to have impacted the neighborhood to any degree. It is a dog grooming business, but there's no outdoor kenneling with that. She has, her kennels indoor and grooms the dogs, and people come and pick them up. So I can answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions, Ms. Bushyhead? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience like to speak in support of? Anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close this public hearing. Anybody like to introduce to the audience?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
First reading of bill number 4217, an ordinance rezoning property from T3 suburban to T5 general urban.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Second reading of bill number 4217, an ordinance rezoning property from T3 suburban to T5 general urban.
Move the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edinson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Cabell.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number 4394.
Next, we have a public hearing on a vacation of three separate drainage easements. Mr. Johnson?
Your Honor, for public hearing, VAC 5123446, have one exhibit to offer, and that includes a city council information form with attachments, staff report with attachments, including location map, map of proposed area of the vacation, affidavit of publication as advertised in the Examiner, May 26, 2012, vacation application with applicant's explanation of the request, 185-foot notification map, names, addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site, and copy of letters sent to the property owners notifying them of the public hearing. These are all the exhibits I have to offer.
Ms. Allen, on behalf of the city.
Thank you again, Your Honor and councilmen. Again, before you this evening is a request to vacate three separate drainage easements as part of the Parkway Estates 4th Plat and 6th Plat. I think there's a pretty good overview map here showing the location of the existing easements proposed to be vacated. Again, the location of the drainage easements do render the lots undevelopable as it stands. As a part of rearranging the drainage on the project, these three drainage easements are no longer necessary to control stormwater on the site or the project itself, and therefore applicants come before you this evening to request vacating those in order to make those lots buildable. With that, again, the planning commission also recommends approval. They recommended approval at their meeting last week unanimously, and I will certainly stand for any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Allen? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Is the applicant or representative present?
Good evening. I'm Patricia Johnson with the White Goss Bowers Law Firm, here today on behalf of the applicant.
You wouldn't need to be sworn in.
Oh, sorry. I do. I don't really have anything more to add. As was stated, the current drainage easements are making some of the lots undevelopable, and we have some interested builders in those lots, and we would like to move forward.
Okay, any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak in support of? In support of? In opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close the public hearing. Anyone like to introduce it?
First reading of bill number 4218, an ordinance vacating three separate drainage easements within the Parkway Estates PRO 4th Plat, lots 205, 206, 298, 299, tract L&amp;M, and Parkway Estates PRO 6th Plat, lot 228, and tract O2, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Second reading of bill number 4218, an ordinance vacating three separate drainage easements within the Parkway Estates PRO 4th Plat, lots 205, 206, 298, 299, tract L&amp;M, and Parkway Estates PRO 6th Plat, lots 228, and tract O2, Blue Springs, Jackson County, Missouri.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edison.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Cabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given it ordinance number 4395.
Okay, let's bring us to merril announcements. Next, we have Thostipandai. Tonight's come from Albert Einstein. And it reads, "Problems cannot be solved at the same level of awareness that created them." That concludes the merril announcements, and that brings us to the visitor's section. And I have a visitor's appearance form from Tom Mans and Jim Moran. Would you like to come forward, please?
My name's Tom Mans. I'm president of the Edgewood Homeowners Association in southwest Blue Springs. Do I need to be sworn in? Mayor and councilman, I want to thank you this evening for giving us the opportunity to come and speak before you. We have, residents of Edgewood and southwest Blue Springs have been approached by a problem that we've dealt with in our own neighborhood. It has to do with the fire protection. Although we're residents of Blue Springs and well within the boundaries and city limits of Blue Springs, we are served by a fire protection district that is almost six miles from us, that gives us response times that we feel are unacceptable for a city like Blue Springs. And recently, in 2011, we had two major house structure fires in our subdivision. The first one was in May. There was major structure damage. The contents of the home was totally destroyed. Unfortunately, there was no body home at the time, so there was no injuries or loss of life. The second fire was in October of 2011. It happened at 1:30 a.m. with the homeowners and their daughter and two grandchildren sleeping in upstairs bedrooms. Once again, there was substantial structure damage, and the contents of the house were pretty much total loss. However, smoke alarms alerted the family, and they were able to vacate the home before there were any serious injuries. There were some minor injuries to the man of the house in trying to get his family out of the house. The issue of our fire protection district became the central focus, concern of our residents after these two fires. We saw firsthand the disadvantage of being served by a fire station that is such a distance from us, especially since the corner of Edgewood subdivision actually touches central Jackson County fire protection boundary. You'll notice in your packet of information on the maps there. However, at this time, CJC only responds to fires in our area after Prairie is on the scene and calls for mutual aid. Four of the five central Jackson County fire protection stations are closer to our neighborhood than the Prairie Township Fire Station located at Langsford Road and Milton Thompson Road out east of Lee's Summit. The two closest stations in central Jackson County are under three miles away from our neighborhood. The one at Adams Dairy Parkway is 2.3 miles. The one at 40 Highway and 10th Street is 2.8 miles from our neighborhood. The fire district boundaries that were formed in the 1950s, we feel, are no longer effective to provide the level of protection that our residents of a modern suburban community like Blue Springs should expect to receive. South Blue Springs is continuing to grow in our neighborhood, and those around us, which contain presently over 600 homes, are serviced by a well-run but distant fire station that was originally designed to be mostly a rural fire protection district. Since our last house fire in October of 2011, we of the Edgewood Homeowners Association, the officers, we have done considerable research in seeking avenues to get the fire protection boundaries permanently changed. Though we and others have sought to find solutions through many resources, we do not see a change in the fire district boundaries happening this time or in the near future. Some of the contacts that we've made, which involve some sit-down meetings and some phone conferences, include certain officials of Blue Springs City, central Jackson County, and Prairie Township boards and officers, Attorney Steve Mauer, who has had some experience with district boundary changes in Kansas City and Independence, Missouri State Fire Marshal's office, Governor Nixon's office, Missouri Association of Fire Protection Districts, the O'Fallon Fire District, Lee Summit Fire District, Lee Summit Dispatch, and Representative Sheila Salon, previously, and previously Representative Brian Pratt. What our research has concluded is, is that an automatic mutual aid agreement between CJC and Prairie is the most sensible answer to our dilemma, and it will solve our issue that we have at this point on response times. Many fire districts in our state have entered into automatic aid agreements in order to provide that level of safety for their residents. Automatic mutual aid means the closest available station responds to an emergency. The Missouri Fire Marshal Office told us that it's a common practice for neighboring districts to have an auto aid when these warrant. Larry Boyle from the Missouri Association of Fire Protection Districts told us that the St. Louis metro area, all of the districts, fire districts, use an automatic aid agreement in that large metroplex. Every day, they do that, and that reciprocity and financial considerations do not take precedence over public safety. The O'Fallon Fire District, which actually, the city of O'Fallon, is the only other city in the state of Missouri, other than Blue Springs, of a population of over 50,000, that does not have its own city fire department. So we and O'Fallon have something in common in that respect. They refer to their agreement with their bordering fire districts as a borderless fire district. They have entered into those kind of relationships around their community that, where they really consider to be borderless. Everybody responds as needed for the safety of the public. We petitioned Prairie Board for an automatic aid agreement in December of 2011, which they agreed to do. We subsequently petitioned central Jackson County and have twice been denied our petition based on their view that required reciprocity cannot be received between central Jackson County and Prairie. You can see attachment number five in your packet, and there's a letter there from central Jack that states basically that they deny automatic aid for that reason. Before they made this decision, the first time, the CJC Board and officers did not meet with the Prairie Board to discuss the quality of their service and preparation of their firefighters, and how they could better work together. CJC has automatic aid agreements with Fort Osage and Snye Valley districts. After encouragement from an unknown source, the CJC Board requested a joint meeting with Prairie and their board members on May 16 of this year, and several of us, Edgewood homeowners, were in attendance. It became clear to us at that meeting that there has been a lack of communication between these two districts and their officers, and it has become a hindrance, we believe, to the citizens. After this joint meeting, once again, CJC denied our request for automatic aid with Prairie Township. The CJC Board's comments were about money, not considering the need to provide service, nor did they consider that we have been, there have been, on average, only two structured fire calls in a year to Edgewood, and over, two on average, over the last 10 years to our neighborhood. Their suggestion to the Prairie Board was that they should pass a levy to raise funds needed to purchase land and build a building, provide staff and equipment for another station which would be closer to south Blue Springs. In this view, Prairie Board and we as the residents would have to pay a higher levy in order to have that level of fire protection. The chance of passing a levy in this economic climate, we believe, would be very difficult, if not impossible. That has brought us to appear before this council tonight, and before you, mayor, asking for your intervention on behalf of the residents and citizens of south Blue Springs that find themselves in this situation. Two, if possible, use your influence with CJC to reconsider an automatic aid agreement. At this time, we're not asking for a boundary line change. We're asking for that better working relationship between those two fire departments, which we believe if that was the case, it would greatly remedy our situation. We ask you to consider that our Blue Springs city neighborhood is nearly three times closer to central Jack stations than we are to Prairie, that our sales tax dollars that are spent primarily in Blue Springs in CJC's district benefit central Jackson County. As citizens of Blue Springs, we pay the public safety tax, which benefits central Jackson County by providing state-of-the-art dispatch, communication, and equipment, and connects us, them, with multiple agencies as the Blue Springs Police Department, Independence, Kansas City, and others. Also, as citizens of Blue Springs, our taxes fund the ambulance service that is contracted to central Jackson County. As Blue Springs citizens, we would hope that all of our city officials would be concerned and motivated to see all of its citizens have the same quality of emergency services. I'm going to ask Jim Moran to come up and just share from this article that we found that was very interesting. Jim is our treasurer from our homeowners association.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council. A lot of you know me as a citizen of Blue Springs, but I've come to you tonight a little bit different from a history, and I want you to kind of get an idea what this is. I was born and raised into a firefighting family. My dad was the chief of the fire department of one of the naval stations during World War II. He later came back home to Jacksonville, Florida, which is the largest city in the United States in land area, and was a fireman on that department till the day he died. I grew up in a fireman's home, and I understand what automatic aid means and what the safety of life and property should mean to the people of Blue Springs. I want to read a letter to you that comes from a firefighternation.com article. It was called "Formal Automatic Mutual Aid Agreements Are a Must." It's written by a fireman, and it came out in December 31 of 2008. There is a copy in your packet, but I'd like to read it. "As a young aspiring firefighter, I admittedly avoided the political aspects of the fire service. Call me naive, but I assume politics had nothing to do with the more beloved aspects of the job, deploying hose lines, throwing ladders, ventilating roofs, and therefore wasn't important. Today, as a more seasoned student of the profession, I understand that nothing could be further from the truth. Our tactics, our safety, and the resources we employ in every aspect of our jobs are directly related..." directly related to the political relations we have fostered or alienated over the years. A brief discussion of automatic aid with a firefighter is nearly any part of a country demonstrates the power of politics within the modern fire service. In some areas, statewide mutual aid systems have become the model for the nation, time-tested and proven successful. Yet within the same states, local departments are forbidden to provide automatic assistance to their immediate neighbors from which they're separated by nothing more than an imaginary line of differing political beliefs. Fully staffed fire stations are bypassed, response times are delayed, and citizens suffer the destructive consequences. So how is it that when large-scale events, man-made or otherwise, strike a specific area of the country, Katrina, Joplin, ice storms in the Midwest, that people respond without ever thinking about it a second? The fire is going on in Colorado right now. There are firemen from all over the country going to help them, not asking for a penny to do this. The defined barriers of emergency response districts throughout the country are oftentimes hardened by emotional scars, territorial battles, and political agendas that in many cases predate and extend beyond a sitting administration. That's why in these times of great financial constraint, behaviors must change. There's likely no better time for local leaders and fire chiefs to mend the broken borders, to put aside our petty differences and territorial struggles, and put forth a formalized agreement to automatically assist our neighbors. Put simply, to come together to establish a system that provides the highest level of service without boundaries. I understand that such an agreement will incur expenses, that liabilities must be waived, assuming that local coverage areas must be protected in the absence of local resources. Yet in these trying times, operational norms are no longer. Automatic aid is not only the economic solution, but also a moral obligation to our citizens and our firefighters. We provide ourselves on a fast and effective response, yet to normally prevent the closest available unit from rendering aid based on an imaginary border is a failed opportunity to achieve our sworn mission, saving lives and protecting property. Regardless of our personal beliefs, politics is and always will be the power broker of the modern fire and emergency service. It's the responsibility of all ranks, from firefighters to fire chiefs, to lend a helping hand in building a coalition based on a solid give-and-take relationship and to collectively compromise for the betterment of the individuals and groups represented. In some cases, we're asked to give more than we receive; in others, we're the recipients of a larger cash, but in the end, we all benefit. For each of us who have sworn to perform our duties to the best of our abilities, we have reached a point in time where sacrifice is not an option, but rather a mandate. To assume a degree of risk for failure to compromise is not only foolish, but a failed opportunity to progress, expand, and promote your personal and organizational safety. We owe it to our communities, we owe it to our families, and we owe it to ourselves to make the right choice." Again, this is from an article written by Timothy E. Sendelbot and published in a firefighting magazine. I'd like to touch on one more thing before Tom comes back up. In your packet, there's also some notes in here from the Lee Summit Dispatch, so you'll have an idea of what we're talking about. On our first house fire, the Chuck and Linda Smith's house, which is at 4209 Southwest 14th Street, 1:10 a.m., a 9/11 call was placed to the Lee Summit Dispatch. At 1:11, Prairie Township got the call. At 1:15, Prairie is en route. Blue Springs arrives at 1:17, the police, which took six minutes. At 1:23, Prairie Township's on the scene. It takes them 12 minutes to get there. At 1:18, Prairie Township calls Lake Ladawanna requesting mutual aid. Ladawanna and Prairie have automatic mutually on structural fires. At 1:26, Lake Ladawanna gets there. That's 15 more minutes. At 1:30, Prairie Township calls CJC requesting mutual aid. CJC is on the scene. 23 minutes for a major fire department to be on the scene, which fire station is no more than three miles from our neighborhood. After being confronted by a concerned homeowner at the previous Edgewood fire, asking why CJC was not called for backup immediately, Chief Robinson did call CJC on this fire. As mentioned earlier, they suffered major structural damage. That was the second fire in our neighborhood. The first one kind of paints the picture, really, what happened. At 4202 Southwest 14th Street, Nikki Melton and Elgin Bonwell's home caught fire at 10:42 a.m. in the morning time. 9/11 call was placed from a cellphone. The call was dispatched to CJC by mistake, and CJC then calls Lee Summit. Time is frequently lost over calls going through the wrong department. Another premise why CJC would be better for us, because that's where it starts out. Dispatch picks up that, Blue Springs City, so they call CJC, and then they have to reroute it to Lee Summit Dispatch, who then calls Prairie. Prairie gets the call at 10:43. At 10:45, they're en route. At 10:46, the Blue Springs police arrive on that scene. They arrived in four minutes. At 10:54, Prairie Township is on the scene, 11 minutes after the 9/11 call was made, and CJ's average response time, according to all their records, is 4 minutes and 45 seconds. So we've just wasted over six minutes. Prairie Township calls Lake Ladawanna requesting mutual aid. Lake Ladawanna's on the scene, 19 minutes until backup support arrives. The next part, you have to understand, the reason that Prairie is calling these people is because of the lack of work between the two districts we're talking about. So instead of calling CJC at this time, they call Lee Summit. Lee Summit requesting mutual aid, and they arrive 42 minutes until a major fire company arrived on this scene. I don't believe anybody sitting here looking at me wants their house to catch on fire and wait 42 minutes for a major fire department to arrive. CJC is a major fire department. They are trained extremely well. This is why we're talking about this. They never did call CJC. The testimony of Chief Robinson from Prairie Township is that he depends on the fire districts for backup that he feels he has a good relationship with. All of these districts except for CJC. He has made attempts, but has not been able to establish a relationship with Chief Westerman and CJC. These homeowners also lost the contents of their homes, structure over 200,000. Fortunately, in both these fires, there was no loss of life, as Tom mentioned earlier. But we appeal to you to understand the statistics of this, and I'll let Tom come back and wrap it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. We have been in communication several times with Chief Robinson down at Prairie Township, and he has given us his word that his department is more than willing to train with CJC, to cooperate in any way, to provide resprocity, and to develop and to establish a good relationship with CJC. He's desired to do that ever since he's been the chief down there. They received delivery of their new pumper truck this past week, has a state-of-the-art equipment, and they've been able, over the last few years, to make many improvements in their department, including increasing the number of their full-time staff down at Prairie Township. So we believe that it is possible and can be worked out to develop a working relationship between these two fire departments if the effort and the openness was just there, and they would try. So I just want to thank you, appreciate all of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council members, the rest of you present tonight, for giving us this time to address you with this situation. Thank you very much.
Certainly, yeah, Ms. Mans. I want to thank you for coming. I think most of us are aware of this issue. There have been a number of discussions and meetings that have gone on, but I want to thank you for commenting formally, making your request to the City Council tonight.
Appreciate it.
I can tell you, over the last week to week and a half, there are some discussions that are taking place. If those discussions fail to yield some promising resolutions, I will call a meeting.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Not of the chiefs, but of the chairs. And I'll include you in it.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd like to thank Tom and the Homes Association for their patience and their perseverance on this. This issue is not new. It's been around for a number of years now, and a number of people have tried to climb this hill and tackle this one, but it's really the Edgewood Home Association who has brought it to this level. You've done it with complete professionalism, patience with the system. You've addressed all and everything you could, checked all the boxes you could, but it's public safety 101. When you pick up 911, you expect that the closest available safety professionals respond. When you've got to wait for the fifth or sixth checkoff to get that response, something is dysfunctional in your government. And by asking for it to be fixed, you know, you've just got to keep with us and keep pursuing this. Nobody would, up here wants to see you in this situation. Your insurance and your property values are both affected by this too, as your public safety risks that you're taking. And you know what? It didn't used to be like this. Back when the mayor was in these chairs back in the 80s and 92, and I came on board, the districts got along, and the people of South Gate, you know, that was before Edgewood, actually had that kind of response. And somewhere along the way, it did separate like this. Been like this a number of years, and it's gone on way too long. And the longer it goes on, the more risks we're taking, and we haven't got it resolved soon enough. So I really appreciate the Edgewood Home Association for bringing it to the mayor and city staff, and giving us a chance to work on this.
Appreciate it.
Any other questions? Well, not. Thank you for coming, and all those in the audience this year to support you. I'm sure most of the people back there are Edgewood residents.
They are.
And you're speaking on their behalf.
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much. Thank all of you for coming.
Thank you.
Next, we have, to go into executive session.
Yeah, one more.
Oh, no. One more. Thank you. You have a guy staff here to keep me on the straight and narrow. Ms. Haines, would you come up?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm here wearing two hats, both as a resident of Edgewood, but also as pastor of First United Methodist Church, and I'd like to speak just briefly about the sign ordinance and churches. In my position, I often say, "Lord, send me a sign," but I think even the Lord would have trouble being legal with the signed ordinances in churches in Blue Springs. We have run into some issues we didn't even realize at First United Methodist, that we are in violation of it, until we received a letter, I think in March, telling us, and telling us that there would be, oh, a fine of, I think, maybe $200 or $300 a day of being in violation. I then started to research, and we stand under the part of the sign ordinance that relates to special events. I know that I've been speaking to some of you, and we've tried to search for the solution. I don't know what the solution is, but I wanted to make sure you understood the issue. Under the special events sign, you can only put it out 15 days in advance. For churches in particular, that's burdensome. For example, this is vacation Bible school season. You've probably seen many churches around the neighborhood, around the city, with vacation Bible school signs up. Most are in violation. In the summertime, working families use vacation Bible school as a way to help take care of their children. That's great. We churches understand that. We want kids that are going from different ones. That's a great service we provide. 15 days notice does not give enough notice to those families, nor does it allow the churches to put together enough materials for the children that would come. On the other end of things, there's also a limit, one sign per 60 days. For churches, again, that is burdensome. In 2013, you probably haven't thought about this yet, but Easter comes early. Our two big holidays, our two big business days, if you're thinking about us as a business, Christmas and Easter, if we're following the 60-day provision, then if we advertise for Christmas Eve, we will then be out of compliance if we advertise for Lenten programs. That is going to be a big burden on us. I ask for your help. We want to be law-abiding citizens. We're churches, and at First Church, we don't mind paying the fee, but we do need help with having an ordinance that will work for us, whether we exempt churches. I know you don't want to open up the sign ordinance, but find a way for us to both get the messages out that we need to get out and also be good citizens. So I bring that to you.
Well, thank you for coming, because I have been made aware of that and have followed some emails. As a matter of fact, I've asked staff to set up a meeting to discuss this issue. And I know with our city attorney, there are some legalistic things that we would need to probably overcome, but that meeting, I'm not sure if it's set yet, because I've been out of office, but we're going to sit down, and we're going to talk about it, and I would invite two council members if they would like to participate in that.
I'll volunteer right now.
Okay. Is there another one that would like to volunteer right now?
Sure, I'll volunteer.
Well, we've got two different ones. Let's get some balance here.
Do you want to, Ron, you want to?
Either way. I want to add a comment that I appreciate Commissioner Culpepper's advance warning on this. She's been trying to work on the church's behaves as well, so.
So is yours to volunteer, or the other councilman?
I can.
You going to yield to him?
I'll yield to him if he wants it, but he's got, he's pretty busy too, so.
Okay. So we're going to discuss this, and I'll have two council members, Councilman Carter and Councilman Bowerman, to sit with me and staff to just kind of take a look at that ordinance and see, you know, what's reasonable and fair.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're right. Okay. Now, I would accept a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
I think I need a roll call on that, please.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edison.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Kabel.
Aye.
Councilman Levison.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye. Okay. We're going to take about a two- or three-minute break to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will come back and go into executive session.